It is Thursday, March 10th, and it is 6:03 PM. Okay, can I have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda for tonight is the accountant's budget in a scale. Come on up, ma'am. And whenever anybody comes up, please identify who you are and what your position is.
Tammy Martin, Town Attorney.
Very good. What do you have for us, Tammy?
So, I did do an increase in my budget due to surrounding towns. Just was trying to keep myself up to where everyone else is, very minimal. The other thing I increased was my account expense, basically because of inflation. And I ended up getting a new printer and the ink's more expensive. But thank you for the printer because they almost kept jam, jamming and everything, so.
Very good.
Yeah, and so the actual services, that's every other year. So that $4,000 is going down, maybe just the $750 next year. But this year it's a $40,000, that's why that went up. For OPEP, which I attached that for you, what OPEP is.
The municipal audit stays the same each year?
Yes, he actually, actually just re-signed with him. Hey, but I do have another contract I do need you guys to sign. It just has a different name because he's a CPA, he's not CPA, he's not with the same place. But we did sign it, but he sent another one that we do have to sign. But it does stay the same, it's the same for the next three years. And that actually includes our single audit too. So if we go over $750,000 in like a grant, that ends up, we have to give it for a single, we have to do a single audit. If we don't have that though, like our CDBG grant that goes over, or any of our grants go over like $750, we'd have to do an internal audit, and that's what that extra, it's like $4,000 extra. But if you take that out, it's normally like $19,000, so that's why it's a little extra. And I wish you'll see in the contract.
You have any questions?
No, that looks fine to me.
You have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
I have no further questions. Do you have anything else for us?
Oh, that's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Conservation's budget.
She's going to be delayed because she's coming from a meeting, so she said skipper until she gets here.
All right. Am I the assessor either?
No, they're on the 24th.
Oh, okay, you moved to.
It says right on there.
To Miss Nancy, Town Clerk.
A natural on the town clerk. And looking at my budget, I had to increase the assistant town accountant's clerk salary. And I went around the neighborhood and checked out all the clerks what their assistants were making. And it went anywhere from 2121 to 2283, or 2108. So I averaged it out around $20. And then on the expense account, I learned that when the previous town clerk retired, she had taken the money out of the expense account to pay for training for me. So I'm doing the same thing here, so I put in the $10,000 for, just for fiscal year '23 for the training. And then the elections, we have three elections in this fiscal year, and I put them at 12.5 for each one.
So what's the three?
We have the September primary, the November state election, and then next May.
So say again where the training was coming from?
The training is coming from the expense account. If you see, it went from $2730 to $12,730.
Now, where was it coming from before?
It came from the expense account before. For, for an elected town clerk, we had to take it out of the expense account and not salary line item.
Can you pay salary out of an expense account?
That's how it was done.
So for the salary, what is it for, which one are we talking about, the?
For my, for my training?
Because you're gonna make, we're gonna add another line appropriation for that, correct, for the training?
For the train, well, Madeline, we looked at how it was done with Bev Russell retired, and it was under expense.
No, you can go ahead and add it under Silver Madeline, she's my assistant accountant. So we went ahead and we made another line appropriation for that. So you would do as you would put, because you're just, you're doing training. So you could do town clerk.
Training.
Salary.
So another line item then?
Yeah, that's what I would do, for the salary.
So town clerk, training, salary?
Yeah, and then we'll just add, you know, put on the article, just like we do with Madeline's. And then they would go ahead and vote, and then once it gets voted in, we just, we'd go ahead and add that up.
And that's for one year, and then it goes away?
Yeah, actually, actually, they would just put on the omnibus, just put on that budget, actually, and that adds a line in.
Yeah, I said right on there, for fiscal year '23 only.
Yeah, yeah, so then the following year will even be on the omnibus.
Right.
It'll be off your budget. Yeah, so just add that on, on your salary side.
Okay. And everything else is? You went down $10,000 on the elections. But then you're going up?
Well, I only had one election in fiscal year '22.
Then for the three, yeah. Do you have any more questions?
So, assistant town clerk is on the C3 pay scale, right?
Yes, yes.
So you were saying that $27,000 is roughly, is that the step five?
No, well, what it is, no, you asked me to check what the other clerks are making, other assistants? So it comes out to, the average was $20, well, it was $21.50, but I put it at $20. It's 26 hours a week.
So it's beyond? This is the new one. Yeah, C3.
So I mean, do we need to just?
Kick it out?
Fit it into a step?
Or separate it?
Well, I think it's seven cents.
How much an hour?
Twenty.
Just 20?
Yes.
Step five is 20.7 or something.
Yeah.
Seven cents times 20.80, right?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty bucks. It's 20.80 hours in a year, right?
So how I would do it, so I'm just looking at the pay scale right now. So I guess it's a question I'm just gonna generalize because I'm not really sure. So would the person be coming in at the minimum amount, or would you instantly be giving them like a step five? Like, how would that go? Because I'm looking at the pay scale. So how would you do that? Would it depend on their experience?
Their experience.
Okay, so normally, I, don't you, we usually like, do like the $18, and then if you were to go up, so you're just trying to put a little extra in?
If we kept it at 18, would I be able to give them, have somebody come in at a?
So you could probably, you know, to the board, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're flexible on that.
Okay.
If somebody comes in with a bunch of experience, then you can fit them in a slot.
Absolutely, that'd be good.
Yeah, and then I would, I would probably maybe startly put that one. I don't know.
What's lower yet, what step is she up?
Two or three, is it 1670, is it?
1647. Yeah, let me say that's the second step, so.
So you want to put it in that second step?
I, I think that's what I would do, is I would probably do, this is just my opinion again. Maybe do the second step at the $18, and I know, doesn't mean that that person's gonna end up with that. It would depend, obviously, on what you thought for experience. But at least you'd have the, the budget money, if anyone, like say someone had a lot of experience or whatnot, you could switch a step up or whatnot.
Right.
So, and I would, how many hours is it to you?
26.
26 hours.
Do you have your time? Oh, so just do the, what is the rate, 18, just times 26? And it's 52 weeks this year for four days.
And what is the rate, 18 what?
Uh, she has it, I don't have the pay scale.
So it's 26 hours?
Step one is 18.54.
Thank you. Okay, and then times that by 18, 54 times 26 hours times 52 weeks. Yes, so $25,066, I would do $25,067, you don't, you usually don't put cents on the omnibus.
25067.
Yep, so 25067. And then that gives you a little extra if somebody does end up coming in with experience.
Right.
You'll be able to decide what you want, that's up to you, obviously.
Would you say 25067?
Yes.
For assistant?
For, that's for 26 hours.
All right, 26 hours.
That's step two.
Step two.
No, obviously, there's a little leeway.
You agree with that?
You did a step two, not a step one.
Well, she's saying that somebody say somebody were.
So 1891, is that what you multiplied?
What did you do by?
I think it was 1891, is that what you gave me?
Okay. So Nancy, 1891, not 18.54?
Well, then it's gonna change.
No, I think you did the 18.54.
That's what they did.
Oh, 1891?
No, 18.54, I think Dawn did.
Okay.
Whatever number you gave me, so 18, that's step two is?
Do you want step one or step two, Nancy?
Step one is 18.54, step two is 1891.
Which one would you prefer?
Well, Laura, well, your assistant now is a step two.
Oh, yes, so you want to do that.
So you want to do a step two.
So I would do 25567, 25567.
Because that's what your assistant is now.
Right, and then you could always look at the wage scale and decide what you want if somebody's just coming in, okay, with experience.
So what factor are you using when you multiply the wage rate?
So this year, if you work four days, it's 52 weeks this year, every year is different.
Okay.
For someone like, example, Chief LaVoy and Chief Mallett, they work five days. So theirs would be 52.20 because it's one week, one day. If it was like one week and two days, it'd be 52.40, you know, that's how they kept doing it. But us, we would be 52 point, say we were 52 weeks and one day, we'd be 52.25. Because 25, 25, 25, 25 is one, does that make sense? Point two times five is one.
Sure.
But it's even this year.
Yeah, it's even this year, so that's a good thing for us, but not for the ones that work five days.
Okay, all right.
Just, I usually look at everything.
You don't have to poke your hand right behind you. Bang the cap. All right, so we good with that, everything else?
Well, what was the step two at 1891?
1891.
Yeah.
Do you want the calculation again, Nancy?
Yes, please.
Sure.
25567?
Yes.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
You hear counting glasses going on now. All right, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Eric, do you have any questions?
I, I just wanna say that I'm really enjoying here watching everybody doing this, happy, in harmony, and going back and forth with the board, you, you feel comfortable doing this, I, I like that. Eric, after that, I have no questions.
Very good. So.
Thank you.
Just with. You got her so comfortable, sure. So with the change to 25567 for the assistant accountant's salary, everything else looks good to me, it's, everything's reasonable. You don't have any issues, I don't have any issues?
No, no, sir.
You don't have any issues? So I think we're good?
All right, now I agree.
Thank you very much. Okay.
No, she's, she's a contract.
No, you're a contract, okay. Yeah, directors and all usually contract.
Yeah.
All right, treasurer?
You got a new one?
Take the old one out of there, you have an old one, you can show a new one.
Is it people?
It says updated on the.
It says updated 31.
It should be three pages. I have three pages here.
Dawn Spastak, Town Treasurer.
Very good, thank you. Okay, what do you have for us tonight?
Just a couple of changes from this current year. On my salary, I increased it 3% for COLA increase. The clerk position, my treasurer's clerk position increased based on the wage scale from your office. So it increased from 1484 to 1640 minimum at 19 hours. The third one is the treasurer's expense increased, and that's pretty much an increase in payroll services, inflation and postage. I added a new line item in consulting with FinCom and the assistant accountant, the, under bank service charges, actually, it's not over there, sorry, that's coming up. Bank service charges increased because of banned issuance fee, so we have a couple of bans out there. Those are bond anticipation notes, and I anticipate reissuing one, if not two, next year. So that's just the issuance fee for those, that's why there's an increase in case we have another one. I know without possibly the ambulance that they're looking to purchase, we may need a ban for that, so I increased the issuance fee.
So planning ahead?
Yes.
Very good. All right. The other thing is the tax taking of property, is that gonna be enough?
I also have the revolving account.
Okay.
So I have money in there for legal fees for tax foreclosures. This is pretty much for.
Well, one thing I was thinking of is, weren't we putting the closing up of houses under your budget? So that would have to go under you, because you kind of, you handle all that.
I do, I handled the foreclosure.
Yeah.
Part, piece of it.
But what about closing up the property?
Securing, securing and insuring, well, we should be all set with insurance now because I believe we have blanket coverage, those, for any properties.
But as far as securing the property, so after you've taken the property and you do it, I know you kind of come through us, but we don't really have a line item for that.
Well, once it becomes town property, it's owned by the town, which falls under the town's selectman purview.
Okay.
I do understand.
So it has to stay under us?
Yes, and that's where, that's where it is right now, those three, the three properties, yes, that's.
But the way we were figuring it is, since you were going through the whole process, and part of that process, we just, hey, whoever, you know, we need you to, you know, close up this house, make sure nobody can get into it.
I mean, she could add it on her line and you wouldn't put a budget in, she put the budget in.
I have other things like benefits, like our town benefits that are under the selectmen's section of the budget, but I budget for them because it's a townwide expense, it's not just the treasurer's department expense. So that's why it falls under the selectmen's.
Okay, as long as we have an answer for it, but it just, sometimes these things make more sense being underneath, you know, like you, because we, we are just kind of like, you know, in the distance for it. It kind of eventually comes to us, but you're really the one doing all the paperwork and the footwork for a lot of this stuff.
And I don't mind budgeting for that and planning for that, but I still think the expense should fall under the board because I'm not responsible for boarding up the places. So I don't call for contracts or vendors to do that. So I'm not sure I would be comfortable with signing off the bills for that if I don't solicit the services. But if we work together.
But if you did.
But it's under the town's property. Falls under the board's.
Okay, all right, as long as we have an answer.
Once it goes out of tax title through the foreclosure process?
It's technically under us then.
Right, so the town then has ownership of it, so the town owns the property. It's not under a treasurer's deed, it's under town property.
I got it.
And as long as we're on communication, because we all have to work very close when it comes down to that.
Right.
Has to go through Dawn, go through you, go through me, probably, assuming, why does the reason? Fire, I don't know who does the boarding up, but.
I think we were just thinking of making it a little more efficient, right?
Right.
Since you're already handling all the other aspects of it, right, you could just go and get boarded up and secure it. But, I mean, if it's.
But it makes sense if it's falling under us and it's technically our property now. We just gotta account for it and make sure we have a budget for that. So we're gonna have to add that budget within ours, because right now, we don't, we don't have a budget for that.
Right, so you'd have to just add, on the omnibus, just add a budget line.
That's why we're looking, when we're asking, it's like, okay, where are we gonna add this? And who's gonna be responsible for that portion? And as long as we know who is doing it, and we know, okay, the selectmen are gonna handle that, we can put it under our budget and do that.
Yeah, and I don't mind, you know, working with you to show, to tell you what's coming down the pipeline for next year.
Well, we wouldn't know, we don't want to just show it up at somebody's residence. Hey, we're gonna board up your house.
I mean, we budget for it, you know, so that we can budget appropriately. You know, I don't.
Right.
I don't mind putting in a budget and discussing that with you.
Well, that, that's the thing, we're gonna have to look at what we're gonna need for a budget to do that, because how many more are you looking at?
Right now, in Land Court, I have one more property, however, there's no building on it, so there would be no securing of it.
That's an easy one.
I can't guarantee that there will be no others, but typically, it takes two years to go through Land Court, a year and a half to two years, and there's nothing else in the pipeline in Land Court right now.
Okay. Well, that makes that easy.
I mean, do we create a line item with zero in it, or?
Well, we should create a line item just in case, for that property, in case if we have to put fence up or something.
I would put a little budget in there, just in case.
Like a thousand dollars.
Just in case. And you never know if something just pops up all of a sudden, you know, I know you don't have anything in Land Court, but if somebody just, can they just turn over a property to us and say, I don't want it no more?
They can turn over a deed in lieu, which would have to be accepted by the selectmen.
And somebody could easily do that.
They could, potentially, yes.
And then we'd have to board that house up.
If you accepted it, yes.
So we need a budget, just in case. Looks like we're gonna have to go over our budget again.
Great.
All right.
I think I put the first page.
Yep.
All right, second page is the benefits. County retirement assessment increased, that's per the Worcester Regional Retirement Systems Actuarial Assessment Report that we received, and that's just based on amount of contributions, less amount of retirements being withdrawn, subject to the actuarial amounts. So I did receive, that's an actual figure.
Sure. Went up almost 67,000, oh, no.
From last year, it went up about 35, 37,000.
And this, we have no say in these numbers at all, pay them, that's it?
Um, pretty much, pretty much. I mean, I review it to make sure that it looks reasonable, that there aren't any outliers. We have had a lot of retirees lately.
Well, there's not much we can do or say about unemployment insurance, life insurance, that's beyond our control. They set the numbers.
So, well, we can go through line by line, so, okay. Medicare, I increased, I'd like to put a hole on this until we get an actual salary figure because the Medicare is based on a percentage of salaries. So I increased it. So I increased it based on an increase in salaries. But I don't know with all the wage scale adjustments and salary increases, what that's going to look like.
Can you, can you wait on it? Is, to do this later on, or?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
What are you going to need to know?
So I need to know a total salary budget for the town before I can have an actual good Medicare number. I plugged in a number based on what I thought maybe an increase would be. But I don't know other departments' wages or salaries even proposed, so I can't calculate that out. So I just, I would recommend that we take a look at it before final budget.
Once we're done with the pay scales and everything, we know where everybody is, then evaluate your number?
Yeah, just to make sure it's reasonable and we don't have a shortfall.
Okay. Very good.
Medical insurance, I increased slightly. The average rate increase per Maya is 3.7%. So I went with that increase. We won't know a final until it gets closer to our our benefit year, which is September.
Which this needs to be done before that.
Right, which is typical, so they give us an average rate increase. And we typically fall within the average based on our claim rate. So we're typically right around the average or lower. So I feel comfortable with the 3.7 increase. Dental insurance, I kept the same. I did hear that there will be an increase in that as well, but we are running below budget this year. And I don't, I don't think we need to increase it, because if there's an increase in the rate, I think we have enough buffer even this year to absorb that. So I feel comfortable keeping that at nineteen eight. Retiree medical insurance is going down a little bit. We did have some adjustments in retirees, whether either their withdrawals from the plan or deaths of retirees this year.
Okay.
So I decreased that slightly. Life insurance, that is our portion that we pay for the accidental and death benefit for Boston Mutual. So that's per employee. So I kept that the same at the thirteen hundred.
So that's thirteen hundred total? Doesn't seem like a lot.
Our portions, well, the bill's about a thousand a month, so. I mean, it's just a premium for a four thousand dollar policy. That's typically what it's been. And we haven't had any increase in that in years. Unemployment insurance, I kept the same at ten thousand. We do have an unemployment trust fund that we typically take any payments out of for any unemployment. We were hit last year due to COVID. But that seems to have streamlined a bit, and we typically don't have a large unemployment payment out.
Okay.
So.
So it seems like everything else is pretty much where we planned it. With some, some going down, some going up a little bit. You have any questions?
We have one more page.
Yep. Who's asking about this one? Any questions about this?
No, sir.
Third page.
Third page is my debt. Debt retirement, I kept the same. That is just our contractual obligations for the long-term debt that we have. We have no debt betterment principal and interest. The interest for short-term debt, however, I I need to take a little bit of that. I don't know why I took that out. It should read twenty-one hundred. And I apparently took that out.
For twenty-twenty-three?
For twenty-twenty-three, the interest in short-term debt should be twenty-one hundred. That is the interest that we pay on the bands. So right now, we have two bands out, one for the streetlight and one for the highway. I apologize if that, that erased from there.
How much do we still owe on the highway barn?
The highway barn is in our long-term debt. That's not part of that. And balance on that? I'd have to look. I'm not exactly sure what our balance on.
Ballpark.
I'll name one of the ballparkers.
Million, seven hundred fifty thousand?
Do you have my annual report?
I'm not here, I have it in my, in the office.
My debt, my debt schedule should be on there.
Now with something like that, would it be beneficial for the town trying to pay off that debt? Versus having such a long-term debt line?
Actually, our debt structure is very good right now. We don't have a lot of debt. We, we paid off the two betterment debts that we had back in nineteen or twenty, because our income for the betterment went away, so I paid down those debts. These are USDA debts. And the interest rates are relatively low on them. Some debt is better than none sometimes. And I don't, I wouldn't look at getting rid of.
That's why I'm asking. Hey, would it be beneficial for us to pay that off or pay it down somehow?
And take the cash? That's a large sum of cash that we'd be looking to take.
Okay.
So.
Asking, I ask these questions. Because, you know, I know it's good to have some debt. So you can show that you have a payment history and you're paying your bills on time and you're good for it. But I don't like having debt.
So the other thing.
Any debt.
The other thing too is with USDA debt, you don't want to pay down your USDA, all of your USDA debt early, because it is a contractual obligation and you get a preferred rate. So they expect the term to be out there for the term of that.
So they could charge us even more, charge us a penalty for doing it?
There aren't, we have penalties typically. But, but you have to have a valid reason to pay down USDA debt, like the betterments were USDA. Our betterment, our betterment debt was tied to the income that we received on those betterments for the Heritage Village.
Okay.
It was a debt to them. So once that was sold and they paid us off of their debt, I then had a reason to pay down the USDA, because we no longer have that income in to be paying that out. So I got that payout now. I want to pay down the debt now to match it up.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not having an influx of income. Like, we're not selling the barn. If we were selling the barn, then we can get rid of it. But we still have the asset on the books, so we should keep that.
All right.
Let me see if my debt's in here. So the highway barn, at the end of six thirty twenty twenty-one, our outstanding balance was a million four oh, four oh eight. And the rate on that is four point one two five. So currently, we only have three debts. We have the highway barn and the two, we have two bonds for South Street Resort. The rest of them paid off.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any questions?
No.
And then I have one other line that we didn't touch on is the principal for short-term debt.
Okay.
We typically don't budget for this. I typically go to the special town meeting and ask for free cash to pay down some on our band, because I like to pay some down every year. But in speaking with FinCom, and I'm in complete agreement that we should be budgeting that rather than relying on free cash. So I am asking for fifty thousand to pay down some of our short-term debt in twenty twenty-three. So in twenty twenty-two, in this special that's coming up before the annual, I will still be asking for some from free cash if there's any available to pay down for this year, for twenty-two. And then twenty-three, I won't have to go to special for free cash. It'll be in our budget already to pay.
So what's, what's an example of short-term debt?
Those are our bands. So those, that's what I was talking about, the streetlight and the highway equipment that we just purchased.
Okay.
And then Adam's ambulance will also be a band. Those are short-term, smaller debts that you're allowed to roll over for a maximum of ten years.
Okay.
Until you have to turn it into a bond. But bonds are very expensive and typically for a thirty or forty-year time period, they're very expensive to issue and the interest rates are usually higher. So bands are a good source for short-term debt up to ten years. So rather than at ten years, still being stuck with the total amount due, which you could be, I like to structure it so that you're paying a little bit off every year.
Hopefully, we don't have to spend, you know, that much on an ambulance for the next ten years. Hopefully, we can pay that down sooner.
And what does band stand for?
Bond anticipation note.
Bond anticipation note.
So it's just a short-term note with the anticipation that you will be bonding it, but you don't have to bond it. As long as it doesn't exceed ten years rolling over, or nine, we'll just do a ten-year maximum.
Okay. Very good. And FinCom was good with your budget?
Yes, as far as I know, they were.
You have any questions?
I'm going to have to go back to school. So much information.
Well, we're getting an education.
Yes, we are.
You have any questions?
No.
We are with the experts today.
Yes.
I know it's the Monday, huh?
Yeah. All right, you got anything else for us?
I don't believe so.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I guess we can go back to conservation then, huh?
Oh, you skipped over me.
We did. Come on up.
Okay.
How are you doing tonight?
I'm great, how are you?
Good. Okay, can you please identify yourself?
Oh, my name is Joyce.
And what your position is?
I Hocker, I'm the Chair of Warren Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much, Joyce.
And I'm here to present our budget.
I'm going to just say, full disclosure, Joyce is my wife.
And you're going to recuse?
Well, there's no salary involved. So technically, I don't, but if you feel more comfortable with me recusing, I will.
I think it's probably best, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Because again,
Yeah.
the appearance.
Right. Okay.
So.
Adios.
Yeah.
Rich is going to recuse himself from this position as part of the budget.
Is the door locked?
No.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yes.
And we're going to discuss your budget and pay scale. Okay, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, I don't have anything on the pay scale, frankly. I don't know anything about that, which is somewhat pathetic, but it usually goes that way. I, typically, what has happened in the past is that the Selectmen's Office has told me what the pay scale.
We live with them.
What the pay scale would be.
You guys don't talk to each other?
No, not about this.
All right.
Just like enough, really. So is there a what I.
So did we already factor Corinne in there?
I don't know what step Corinne's at. There is enough room for an increase, for sure. So I didn't short-change that. So I did leave room for an increase, but I wasn't sure if it was a a gear to bump up. How long has she been here? How long has Corinne been here? I don't know. I know that's, my sense of time is, she's been here for at least five years, and I think that she's already had a bump.
So she's probably a step two?
Yes. She is a step two. I'm sorry.
So she'd be making seventeen twenty-three?
She will be, but not now.
She will be.
Oh. Allow me to take out my calculator and not swear in public. Really? What is, what is the, what is the current rate? Do you know?
I do.
Current rate is fifteen oh five.
So she's making fifteen oh five now.
Let me just do this again.
Then she'll need seventeen twenty-three. Could you factor that in your budget?
And then I'm going to go times fifty-two weeks. It's five thousand three hundred thirteen six. And then we're going to do. What did she say, seventeen twenty-three? Sorry. Seventeen twenty-three. Four times twelve. Okay, and what did I have for her in here? We're good.
You have nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Is that going to be enough?
Oh, yeah. It's going to be enough, and it's enough for overtime, too. If she had, you know, if there's a need for overtime.
Okay. So you're basically level funding?
Uh, no.
You're dropping down, actually.
Well, for that, we are asking for an additional four thousand dollars.
For Lucy Stone?
For Lucy Stone. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Tim O'Brien started, Lucy Stone was donated to Warren Conservation Commission, I think in the sixties or, you know, late sixties, early seventies. I'm not sure what happened to it, but there was, it ended up just being left and it turned into this really fabulous spot that was overgrown with multiflora rose. And so Tim has worked with the community at large, organizing volunteers, raising money, doing a whole bunch of things. And he has removed the multiflora rose and replaced it with this really incredible pollinator garden. And so they're all native plants. It's really incredible how much the soil has changed from rocky, dirty, like really difficult to work with now. If you're pulling weeds, they just come out. You know, there's more, it's really incredible soil. So anyway, as you know, he's really active and he's gotten the scouts involved. He has the community, various members of the community involved. And people use the park all the time. You know, there's fishing on both sides, the boat launch, et cetera. So what he is asking, so we received from, through CSX and various channels, we received a sum of money in two thousand thirteen that covered, and he's been using that money for expenses, and it's been replenished from various sources who donate every year. But that money is, and he continues to use that money, but what he's looking for is maintenance of the garden. And the town paid for the maintenance of the garden, so that becomes a habit, because he is looking to retire eventually from this volunteer position, which is almost full-time. And he's trying to, you know, minimally have the town pick up the, just the maintenance. And so it's a part-time, again, he would have it part-time. It's on a contractor basis as opposed to an employee for three days a month at twenty dollars an hour.
Okay.
For, and he has somebody who is an orniculturist who has applied and he's interested in having work there.
So you're looking at creating a position?
No, not a position. It's going to be, we're going to pay them as a contractor. Like we would with.
I'm looking at the finance people.
Right.
I'm like, can we do this?
So we're not going to hire as an employee, because that just becomes complicated and it becomes an employee and that's not, right?
Right, so what it would be under, be under like an expense, because you'd be like, you'd use a vendor technically. You're using somebody to go ahead and they would bring in their W nine, Don would get all that information. And then you would pay them as they worked for you.
Yeah.
We could do that, it'd be like a vendor, so it'd be under your expenses.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so you're looking at creating a line item for Lucy Stone.
For Lucy Stone.
To pay a vendor.
To pay a vendor.
To maintain them.
And some, but not all of the expenses.
Okay.
Yeah, you could even just up your expense on that. You wouldn't have to make a new line item, because it's like a vendor service.
So we would, instead, we would do the vendor line for Lucy Stone. So we would, instead, we would do the vendor line for Lucy Stone. I mean, for the vendor, and then we would just add the expenses that Tim would use.
So what is your expense right now? Right now, what is your expense on your budget?
Uh, two thousand.
So just, then you would have the four thousand, because that's what you're looking for?
Okay, so I would just add that. I wouldn't do a line item for Lucy.
So it'd be six thousand, and then the, the reason behind it would be, you wanna take care of the, the maintenance on Lucy Stone, um, which is the reason why you're looking for an increase, and you're not looking to hire an employee, you're looking just for like a ser, like a vendor ser.
Vendor service.
Yes.
So that would just fall under our Conservation Commission expenses, as opposed to.
Exactly.
It would be some, a little bit easier for us.
So it's like a service. So when you have a, um, a line item for you, you have a service or a supply, that's what I use, you have to do a service or a supply, that would be, uh, be considered a service, because they're doing the maintenance on the lawn, they're doing all that, so that's what that would be under. It's, it's basically your expense line.
It's on my expense line. So I'm gonna have clerical, I'm gonna have expense, and that's it.
Yeah, but Don would need the W nine for whomever he would have the vendor service.
Sure.
And I would just suggest, I know you said you'd want a separate line, that's just a internal control that you would have.
For ourselves.
Exactly, you know, Excel spreadsheet or whatever.
But when I'm asking money from you guys, it's just two lines, clerical, expenses, period.
Yes. Nice and easy.
Easy.
It's fine. Okay, yeah, that's it. I mean, that's all we're.
So we'll just combine that one. So you just got one expense account, and that's gonna be six thousand eighty dollars.
Yes.
So your total is the same, nothing else has changed.
So the total is fifteen two four seven, yeah, nothing's changed.
Yep. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, besides, I just wanna say kudos to Conservation for the wonderful job that they've been doing.
Tim, you can thank me, just only because, you know.
Well, Tim is wonderful.
Oh, my gosh, Tim is amazing.
Yes. After that, I have no questions.
Okay, all right.
We need more Tims.
We need more Tims.
He's a big asset for the town.
He is, an enormous asset.
All right, so I'm good.
I'm good, sir.
Unless you have anything else, we're good?
I don't.
I think you're good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Rich? Tag, get back in. Okay. Planning Board's budget and pay scale. Present that for us.
Uh, that's a good question.
I was just thinking you would just discuss it. Open.
There's no conflict with it.
Do we have something?
We do, and we had FinCom was notified. And when I was in FinCom, they had no issues with it. The only thing that's going up is a little bit on the payroll to pay staffing here. So we went from twenty twenty-two to, from sixteen thousand to eighteen thousand for salary. And then for expenses, level funded at twenty-five hundred, for a total expense of twenty thousand five hundred. You have any issues with that? Do you have any questions for yourself?
I would just say, did, she'll look at equivalent salaries.
Yes.
She did? Okay. And she's on the C three?
Yes.
Scale, so do you know what she is, she's a minimum step?
Eighteen.
Okay.
So what did you get for a month?
Pardon me?
She's doing, she's just, she's doing the, um, calculation.
Eighteen.
For, for the salary?
Eighteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, no, sorry.
But she's totally eighteen thousand for salary.
How much?
Eighteen thousand?
How many hours does she work?
Well, she splits her time between.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Between this and also, um.
Building.
Building.
And electrical.
And electrical.
She has a budget for electrical, though, for secondary, just building and planning.
Building.
Um, I think it's fourteen each, right? Fifteen each? Fifteen and fourteen, one's fifteen, um, the planning, I believe, is fifteen, building is fourteen. We just have to check in the budget.
So eighteen dollars an hour times fourteen hours a week times fifty-two weeks is thirteen one oh four.
That would be for, um, building, I'm sorry, planning. Planning, sorry.
And she does overtime, too?
Yeah, she does, with meetings and everything else.
Meetings and things like that, so.
She was, and she was.
She usually does, but it's okay to, I mean, definitely, I don't know, just maybe.
And that's, that's just the case, 'cause she asked me, she goes, what happens if I don't do enough overtime to spend that all? And I said, it just goes back. So she was more worried about not having enough than having enough.
Yeah, it's better, yeah.
Do you have any questions about it?
No, sir.
Rich?
No.
You guys have any questions about it? So, total budget for Planning Board would be twenty thousand five hundred, and that's just up two thousand from last year, which was eighteen thousand five hundred. That's because of the increase in the pay scale. All right, good. Moving on. Wow, we're moving right through here. Yeah, everybody, so warrants and bills.
Okay.
You're up.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants and bills. Number seventy-two payroll, forty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Number seventy-three vendor, hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Number seventy-four payroll, ninety-two thousand five hundred. Number seventy-five payroll, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Number seventy-six vendor, hundred and three thousand nine hundred twenty-two and seventy-three cents. Following bills, Rico for three hundred and fifty dollars and eleven cents, Crystal Rock, twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. WD Mason for twenty, uh, two hundred nine dollars and ninety-nine cents and three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents. The Warren Water District, nine thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. Shred It, hundred and nineteen and ten cents. MasCor, thirteen sixty-nine. Beyond, Ciancello Contracting, six hundred dollars. Um, the Animal Holding Facility, uh, thirty-one hundred fifty dollars. Uh, Sousa's Fine Floors, thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Northeast IT, hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Um, C two MA Adams, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Horizon, a hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Easy True Value, eleven ninety-nine. I need a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich?
Aye. David Billy's, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes, and we'll pay our bills. Okay. Minutes. We don't have any prepared right now, because of all the transition going back and forth. And we finally got this office cleaned up again, because we had everything moved into here from the Selectmen's Office. While we're doing the floor over in there. Okay. And it looks really good. This floor turned out really good, and that floor turned out really good. Almost feel like I should take my shoes off at the door and walk in there, so I don't scratch the floor now.
And even the patch where we took out the bookcase.
Yes, they cleaned up the patch, the old bookcase, and they cleaned up the wall, so. Now, looking good. All right. So, old business. We don't have any. So we're gonna move on.
Old business?
Yeah.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Rich?
No, no.
No?
We gotta move past that.
Okay.
So, um, new business. Uh, we have the police and fire reports. Okay. So, fire chiefs first this time. So, activated alarm, you get one, motor vehicle accidents, two, medical assist, six. Cooking fires. Is that like a grease fire in a stove?
Yeah, cook, yeah, cooking fire, we've had a couple of incidents where people forgot they've had stuff stored in their oven.
Oh.
Something we teach in a safe class, it happens, everyone's, you know, happens to the best of us.
So illegal burns, you had one. Investigations, four. Vehicle fires, one, power line, um, incident, you had four. Chiefs? Rescue extraction, one, are they okay?
Yeah, they, you know, those could be anything from a, um, you know, an extrication from an automobile, it could be, um, a, a can doist in the river, it could be, it is a variety of different calls that kind of fall under that category, but, uh, you know, yeah, usually, I mean, you know, if it's something major, I'll let the board know. Normally, it's if it's something we hand over really quickly, it just goes down as a regular extrication or rescue.
Okay, and then canceled calls, you had six, for a total of twenty-seven calls for February?
Yeah, it was a little light this month, but I'll take it.
Yeah, I don't. Take them while you can.
Yeah.
So, ambulance responded to fifty-six calls in February, and six ALS, Advanced Life Support, correct? Uh, we, they were required, um, inspections for February, you had smoke and CO, um, propane tanks, and two oil burner inspections. So you guys held training?
Yeah, we started, uh, implementing training again. We had held off for a few months there for safety reasons, trying to keep everybody separated as much as possible, so we didn't lose the, you know, several departments around us lost most of their staff at the same time. So we tried really hard to break that up a little bit, and, you know, it, it, it brings morale down a little bit, 'cause, you know, everybody wants to see each other and train, but everybody understands. So fortunately, we were able to get through that without major illness and everything, and we're back on track to, uh, to get back where we need to be, so.
Very good. And you're getting close to your payroll?
Yeah, so the biggest issue.
Potential shortage?
Yeah, right now, what, the problem I'm having right now with budget-wise is that I'm gonna end up having to do transfers at the end. I mean, we, I think all of us end up with a couple of transfers, but we're doing so many more ambulance calls right now, you know, for different reasons. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really behind, you know, I'll, I'll make it till, I'll make it till after May where I can transfer stuff. But, you know, going forward in the next budget, I've kind of corrected where we're gonna be in the future, I think, because, again, we're still seeing some of those effects from Mary Lane's closer, you know, we're going to Ware more often, we're going over here more often, they're coming over. You know, we're just all out of service so much more, that we're all covering each other. And so we're seeing increases in mutual aid, we're seeing increases in, you know, uh, hand over times at the ER, so all of it's taking us out of service longer. So we're covering other towns, they're covering us at the same time. So, you know, and we're just doing higher call volume. That's another thing that we've seen, you know, where, not only with COVID, but we're also dealing a lot of mental health calls, you know, we're seeing all that stuff increase. And unfortunately, every time I send the ambulance out the door, I'm paying either two EFTs and a first responder, or at the minimum, two EFTs, or an EFT and a first responder. So unfortunately, when you run all these extra calls, you're not quite, I can't predict where that call volume's gonna be. So unfortunately, that line item is, give or take, how, just depending on how many calls we end up doing. So I'll have to come in for some transfers, but hopefully, next budget, where corrected that a little bit, we'll be more in the ballpark of where our call volume is heading, I think, in the future.
Very good. Hey, do you have anything else to add, Chief?
Uh, no, um, other than the fact that, uh, I got good news on our ambulance, it's, uh, it's in the production line now, which is great. It's way ahead of where we thought it would be.
Very good.
So we were one of the, uh, I believe, us and Holyoke, I wanna say, were the last two that got under before they put the auditorium on and stopped, you know, even working on, because they were so overloaded and having the chassis issues and stuff. So our ambulance, our chassis has been assigned, it's now, it's going into production at the very end of this month. So in April, or early May, I anticipate I'll start taking trips down to New Jersey, uh, every once in a while, to go through the production and sit in, which is what we did last time, you know, you go and do an inspection on the truck and look for anything, sit with the engineering team, and, you know, it's, uh, it's a routine thing. So I'll take two or three trips down there during the production of the truck itself. It'll probably, we're hoping, that we'll have it maybe by the, at, very late part of, of the summer possibly, or in the winter months. But it, it looks like it's good that it'll be coming by the end of this year, which is way better than what they were predicting at first. They were saying July of twenty-three. So, um, you know, we're doing much better than we are, you know, and we got bumped up in line for production, so that's a good thing.
Very good.
Yep.
And then you swore in a new junior firefighter today.
Oh, yes, yep, I'm sorry.
Very good.
That was a mess to me. Uh, yep, we have a, a, a third junior firefighter coming on, uh, she was sworn in today. Uh, she just has to go pass her core exam, which I'm sure won't be an issue, uh, but she comes from a very nice family, she's very, very energetic, uh, you know, been through ROTC and stuff like that, so she's, uh, you know, very driven, like the other two that are in there. So we have three individuals right now that I'm very, I'm very excited about, they, they, they have a ton of drive, a ton of willingness to do this. So I think this is gonna be a, a great way for us to, to tackle some retention issues in the future, so I'm looking forward to it.
Very good. Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions about it?
No, sir.
All right, so moving on to police. Chief Mallett, you're up. Okay, so calls logged, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight calls for the month of February. So, and you ended up twenty-five ending in arrests. So you had two felonies investigated, um, sixty-nine incident reports, unview arrests, so three, warrant arrests, three, summons arrests, nineteen, so total arrests are twenty-five. Protective custody is six, juveniles, four. Motor vehicle stops, hundred and one. Where were those majority of, so I can avoid that area?
Don't go by Rogers Farm.
Do not speed by Rogers Farm. Okay, and then motor vehicle citations, sixty-five. Okay, so you guys are writing a lot of tickets. Hence, don't speed. All right. So your vehicles, again.
Up there in mileage.
You're up in mileage. You know, fifty sixty-eight, hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred, it's crazy. And then fifty-one sixteen is a hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and forty-three. But you do have the new vehicle. And how's that working out for you?
Very good.
Better on gas?
Yep.
We're probably gonna have to get a bunch of those. Right now, gas prices are going up, big time, as we all know. Doing some training with you guys? What training?
Nessbin came and did a training with all the services they provided us. Actually, the school allowed us to use their auditorium, which was nice, so we, uh, we don't really have a training spot. So we used their projector and, uh, in the auditorium, the two guys came from Nessbin, put on a great, uh, training. Actually, one of them had a great story, he's a, he was a Somerset cop, and during a, a raid with a DEA that he was doing, he got shot six times. And, uh, he had a video of actually an emergency, in the emergency room, being operated on, and it was, it was a good story.
Okay. All right, and what's Nessbin?
Uh, New England State, I forget what it stands for, but it's, so all of New England. And basically, um, they can supply us, uh, different items that we need to use for investigations. They can also, if we're looking at someone, and they'll do all the research onto them, they'll give us a spreadsheet of all the info we need, not to get too much into it, what we get from them.
Yeah, no. Okay, very good. And then, um, so you received a grant?
Two.
Two grants?
We got a mini-grant, which is, uh, that helps us, um, pay the salaries of guy that, we have a box where you can bring your prescription meds in. So it pays a salary for the guy every, usually once or twice a month. He comes in, just, I have somebody compile and put him in a box, um, until we destroy him. He comes in, just, I have somebody compile him, put him in a box, um, until we destroy him. Also pays for later on in the year when we do destroy it, it pays the fee for it, and as well as the salaries of whoever goes and brings it, you have to have two people bring it. And also, now that COVID's, well, I won't say it's gone, but lifting a little bit, we can have, uh, take back days where maybe I could pay a guy to sit at the senior center, and the seniors can bring their unwanted meds there, and you can collect them.
Very good, that's very important.
Yep.
A lot of that stuff, you don't wanna get in.
People usually flush them in the toilet, is that's not the way to do it?
Do not flush your meds in the toilet, please. We have programs that will take that stuff and dispose of it properly with the police department.
Yep.
No questions asked.
Nope, you just bring it in a bag, take it, and we throw it right in the container.
Yeah.
The other big one was the AED grant that we-
That's what I was gonna bring up, is you had six AEDs?
Two.
Two?
Two, so we had one already delivered, um, one of the, um, daughters of the gentleman came and, and presented us with it, and they ordered us another one, so that's on order, we're just waiting for that to be delivered.
Okay. Very good. See, other thing. We're gonna get AEDs for this building. Because we don't have an AED in a common space, like, we should have an AED in a hallway here, and probably one on the second floor. We can look at, way we can do that. I understand we, we have to get CPR and AED certified for the employees, and maybe the employees would be interested in doing that, because it's beneficial for them and their families, just in case that they have to use it. And do we have a trainer that can teach that?
I actually have a park timer that just got certified in CPR.
To train, as a trainer?
Yep.
Very good.
You don't necessarily have to be AED tra, I mean, every one of the AEDs that are out there now will literally talk to you as soon as you open up the thing, it'll tell you exactly what to do, but it's never a bad idea to at least do a, a refreshing class on it, like we'll do at the senior center from time to time. Uh, but yeah, CPR has to be a full, uh, there are mandates for that, if they do CPR, that's a, that's a, at least a six-hour class for a new person.
I think that would, do you guys think you'd be interested in doing it, being employees?
I've done it before, I'm, actually, I think mine expires, I'm, I am certified until, I think, August. So, yeah.
Yes.
You wanna?
Definitely.
It is good.
Okay. Would you be interested in sitting in it too?
Sure.
Think we got a class coming up for you, let me know. You know, that'd be great for the employees to set up, and it'd be great to get some, maybe some AED boxes out here, maybe, Chief, if you have something that we can set up?
I can look into some things, uh, you know, I would, the, the grants are kinda hit or miss and everything, if they truly, you know, it depends on what kind of unit we buy, but you may wanna consider maybe drafting a small article for the special town meeting specifically, specifically for that, um, you know, if you wanna get them immediately. You know, they're, they're not super expensive money, it depends on the thing-
No, the prices are coming down.
Yeah, they're coming down quite a bit, and because of, I mean, I don't think anyone's gonna question more safety in the building, I mean, I, I would think that they would buy two AEDs outright for us, at an article, without an issue. And then we could certainly apply for grants in the meantime, I mean, all the town buildings really should have, should have one, but, you know, the important part is somebody's assigned to maintenance them and watch over them, and that's, you know, certainly something we can develop once we get them.
Very good. All right. You guys good with that?
Mm-hmm.
AEDs, we told you?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you had the pleasure to sit down with Jim.
I did.
All right, very good. You guys talk a lot, you know, did you wanna talk, talk, talk about anything you guys worked on, or discussed?
Oh, no, I just added into all the process, yeah.
Okay.
I was able to sit on the, the committee to, for the town administrator, then through the interview process, too. I'm sure we'll be meeting a lot.
All right, um, do you have anything else, Chief?
I believe so.
No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you both for everything you do. Again, you guys are doing a great job. I've seen, um, a lot of good stuff about you guys posted on Facebook, which is great to see, social media, um, you know, families that were very happy that you guys were there, when they called, you responded. Not you directly, but the guys responded, you know, you made, made a world of difference for them, so thank you very much for all that.
Thank you for the support from the board and from the townspeople.
Good. Okay. Very, comments and concerns? Do we have any comments and concerns? Yes?
Could we talk about the time for the annual town meeting and the special town meeting? It's been changed to Saturday, but I wondered if we could come up with a time?
I think afternoon, I was thinking one o'clock would probably be a good start time for the town meeting. Because you're not getting late in the night, you don't wanna start it late in the night, like we've been doing, because then nobody can come to it, and the seniors have a hard time driving at night, and we wanna be open to them, and if we do it too early in the morning, then it's a Saturday, and we're taking people Saturday mornings, and people generally wanna have breakfast with their families, and, you know, kinda take their time, so we don't wanna rush them out the door first thing in the morning either. So I think in the early afternoon, starting it, this way, even if we went to a four-hour meeting, it's only five o'clock. God forbid we ever go to a four-hour meeting, but we just never know. You guys good with that, or would you like this out earlier or later? What's your recommendation?
Well, I just, you know, one o'clock's fine, what about, um, do the special at one, and then the annual at one-thirty?
Or the special at twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty and the annual at one.
Because usually, we did six-thirty and then seven.
Seven, right. So you could do twelve-thirty and one.
Yeah.
I'm good, allows me to go to the dump?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's the thing, it's dump day, too, so you wanna be able to get to the dump, too. All right, you good with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, so the special will be at twelve-thirty, and the annual will be at one.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other comments and concerns?
Well, I have something.
Yes, sir.
I wanna show you guys something, that's why I logged in a few minutes ago, maybe you wanna let me, uh, share my screen?
Yep.
So what I'm gonna show you is, is, it started with a conversation with, um, the board the other day, when we were at the, uh, flag, uh, fire ceremony.
Oh, is this the park?
And, yes, no, oh, yes, uh, first, I, I wanna show you this, I, I usually call myself, like, I build castles in, in the air a lot, and I'm saying, oh, we could do this, we could, and, and we all have fun, you know, saying like, whoa, we need a lot of money to do that, but, you know, dreaming, we shouldn't stop dreaming. And what I wanna show you is, um, something that I, first, I, I wanna mention Parks and Recreation, because I'm gonna talk to one of their properties. And I'm not looking for a yes or no, or I don't like it, I don't like it, I just want you guys to see the opportunity, because we, we are all looking for new stuff, especially in town, and now that, you know, somehow you have an empty building, the police moving out, the bank is going out, I'm trying to come up with some ideas to vitalize our center of town. So let's see if this works.
I like that picture.
Well, it's happening, well, the other day, I took this picture, and I, I was, when I was looking at it, I thought, wow, we have so much history, so much, um, good things in, in, you know, in town. So I'm, we're, we were right here at the ceremony, and we're looking at how everything is happening, and we have brand-new sidewalks, and, 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 you know, streets, so I took a little bit of my time to do a line sketch of my thought. And what it is, is you can see there you have Main Street, you know, cornerstone mag, that's the train over here, and that's how it is right now. So I have some ideas that look like this. So I'm trying to look for more parking, I'm trying to look for a plaza and a park for the people. So basically, what I'm trying to do is pull out the kiosk a little bit down below, making a space for more green area.
You mean gazebo?
Gazebo. So more parking, and, you know, this is just pure thoughts and thinking about it, like I said, it's a castle in, in, in the air. Right now, we're looking at thirty more spaces of parking. To visualize this in a better way, I'm gonna move into the software where I created this, this is the way. And what I wanna show you is how cool this could be. And, you know, this is not something in stone, but the idea to have, you know, a plaza with a nice flag, where we could do, you know, our stuff, our, our little things, we have the fountain that's there, we talked about that fountain that needs to be repaired. And so if we create some more space over here, we move the gazebo down there, we make an area for, you know, like, theater or live music in the summer, and providing more parking level on the street, on the side. I think we can get a little bit going, so just wanted to share that, I, like I said, I don't need any approves or non-approved, I'm just showing you, you know, how cool it'd be to have something like this in town, so we can use it, you know, you know, in a better way, because Warren really doesn't have you know, a, 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 a park where people get to, you know, gather around and go for live music and all that, so it was just a thought while we were there.
So, so with that, we, we were talking, because when we're down there, um, for the, the flag burning ceremony is one of the things we noticed, and Parks does a great job. But I think the selectmen really wanna help and try to revitalize the area, and one of the things we were looking at is we could potentially create some parking, so you can access the park a lot easier. And redoing the fountain that's there, because there's a fountain that was dedicated back in the eighteen hundreds, and that fountain hasn't worked in many years, and if we can get that repaired, get it working again, and potentially open up some of the space, remove some of the trees, so you have more of an open environment, instead of such, like a forest feel, um, kinda pushing the gazebo back a little bit, move it out of the way, so it's not right on top of the sidewalks, so people can watch a band and have it more user-friendly. Kids could play there, um, and get more use out of that park downtown, and this is something we're gonna talk with the Parks Department, I did, um, send Sue Ramsey an email, I know she's very busy right now, asking about it, and saying we would like to talk about it, and, um, you know, this is just something we have the thoughts that we would probably like to work with them with. But yeah, it looks good. The only thing I would say is maybe not have the parking lot in the back, expand the road along Main Street to go down, and maybe if we can, instead of having a parking lot there, maybe we could put, like, um, maybe a playground for kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With swings and monkey bars and things like that in there, so.
Yeah, Derek, can you move it, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, my intention was more like to show you, get you a sense of space, if we can get, you know, twenty cars over there, we can make a nice, you know, playground, we can, we can make it more attractive, we can have, you know, provide some parking.
This would also give us the opportunity, because a lot of folks have been talking about doing a farmer's market. And if we can open up that area a little more and make it, you know, level it off, um, make it more friendly for people to get into, be able to pull vehicles in and park along that, then we could actually have a farmer's market in there with tents and stuff, and hold those types of events right in the center of our town. I think it would be very beneficial for the town. So, I, I like that, that's actually really cool, Derek.
Thank you, I, my intention was just, you know, to get our heads spinning and, 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 you know, shooting, we, we are getting grants for parks, for green areas, this could be the start of the bike path that we're looking at, Lucy Stone, or from here to Lucy Store, West Brookfield, or West, West Warren, so we, we, we wanna, we have a lot to use, and this is a way to, you know, give it another vision in, in, in a good way for the, for the center of town, because without the bank, you know, and, and, and all those little businesses, we, we're running out of options, so we, we wanna make this attractive and, and useful, and, and the farmer market, you know, all our, um, things that we do there, the, the flag, um, ceremony and all that, uh, the Winter Fest, there's a lot of stuff that we could use this space in a better way, um, than, you know, that we, what, what we have now.
And I don't know if anybody knew, but we've been discussing bike path or walking path along the river, going along the river and all the way up to Wright's complex, and the Wright's complex, um, would like to see something like that and help us out with creating that on their end, too. It's a lot of, lot of work that would go in something like that, because there is a lot of other properties, um, that we'd be going along, and we'd have to figure out how the actual path would go along. But there's ideas out there for better utilizing our open spaces, and that's some of the stuff we're talking about, so people know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. If you could actually maybe make a few versions and do another one, probably get rid of the parking lot, expand the parking down more along the road, and do like a park, like a playground in there.
Yeah, we can, we can explore all the things that we have, so.
And then this way, have we have something to present to Parks, so we go in front of Parks and say, hey, this is something, some ideas, would you be willing to work with us on this, and see if we can fund it somehow?
They'll be here the next meeting.
All right.
Cool, very good.
Do you have any questions or suggestions?
Look like an idea?
I love the idea of a farmer's market, so I think that's great.
Farmer's market would be great to have in town, and I've seen a lot of it, and a lot of talk about it on Facebook, unfortunately, a lot of people present the ideas, but nobody actually gets it running. And we're very limited on where we can do something like that within our town, so again, that's where we start looking at, what spaces do we have available, and how can we best utilize those spaces? And I think it's a great space, but it's just not developed properly to do that with. So I think, if we do that, and we get with Parks and work together, we could have a really good thing here in town.
Yeah.
So, we might actually give West Brookfield to run for their money. All right, so any comments and concerns anymore? Thank you very much for that, Derek.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any comments and concerns out on social media? Hands up. No?
Nope.
All right, moving on. So the next meeting date, it's gonna be March twenty-fourth at six PM. Uh, we're skipping the seventeenth, because it's St. Patrick's Day, and everybody wants to have their corned beef and carrot, cabbage, and, you know, enjoy the day, so.
Actually, a corned beef and cabbage, uh, dinner, is it St. Paul's, this, on Saturday? Saint Stan, Saint Stans.
Saint Stans. Annual Village, Village Market is gonna be doing corned beef and cabbage.
Oh, excellent.
Um, for special, so if you wanna order that, they'll-
Oh, I wanna fully order it, right away.
And I'm sure Mason's is doing something, I ate at Mason's today, and very good food as usual, so. I don't know if they're doing anything for St. Patrick's Day, is, and-
They're open for Friday dinner, but I'm-
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the next part, your favorite part of the night.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Danny Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, we are adjourned.